They had more people this weekend.
I saw them. I don't understand what's going on with those though, because I don't even think it's actually listed. Is it listed? It is. Yeah, it's full of mold inside.
Yeah. It's not big, it would be fun.
We have. Oh, I'm waiting for the, that's fine, the four corner markers.
Oh, yes, that'll be a fun conversation.
And I told you that call up. It's a sixty seven sided, it's not a, what, a round. It has a sort of a different survey mark.
All right, we are open and being recorded.
Sixty seven different sides.
Not quite enough time, so we're just looking. We're open and being recorded. Thank you. Um, so we only have one meeting minute to look at from the.
Yeah, we didn't wait yet, we needed five more minutes for the ongoing.
No worries. Alright, so we're just looking at July twenty fourth. Uh, second. Any discussion?
No.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye, there you go. Right, audience participation, public comments?
Yes.
Come on down.
Hope your husband passed along.
Thank you.
Thank you, good evening. What you're looking at are pictures of the bicentennial park that we've taken within the last week.
Okay.
Um, I've been watching the park this summer since I was here last spring. And I was assured that the park was going to be maintained during the summer.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, obviously from these pictures, there's been no maintenance taking place. Uh, in the park, the only thing I did notice is a couple of random flowers planted here and there in the park. Um, I think this is atrocious that the town can't maintain that park and everybody sees it as they ignore the close dots. Um, and I don't know why there isn't a lot of responsibility for the maintenance of that park. Uh, when we talked before, I thought that there was a maintenance plan as well as authority to ensure that it was carried out.
Mm-hmm.
And apparently there's mood sense going on in terms of who takes care of what, when, and how, and who's the fallback person to make sure things are done. So I'm asking for an explanation, I guess.
Sure, so we, um, voted the money for that a little bit late because there was a bit of confusion about where it was gonna come from. If you remember, we were talking about the actual bicentennial park funds not being, um, large enough. And so we were debating a little bit about, um, where all the funds were gonna come from, and I think we decided to split some of it, if I'm not.
I didn't see anything in any minutes.
Um, so anyways, we voted a little late. Um, and then when we finally had decided that we were gonna move forward with it, I let the, um, the woman know who's in charge and she was, she had put it on her calendar. So it wasn't something that she could immediately get to. So she's been doing it for the past few years, um, she's very intense, I know she has a good job, but it just wasn't something that she could get to right away because of the time that we voted it in.
So she hasn't done any work, obviously, in the park. But are those pictures?
I'm not sure, yeah, we can check back with her and see.
I mean, you can look at the pictures, it's obvious the park is in terrible shape, hasn't been swept, there's growth growing up.
Well, I don't think sweeping is anyone, is part of her job. I don't think there's actually anyone dedicated to that.
Total maintenance, the park needs to be a package. I don't think we can leave it unswept. Um, one of the benches was removed after our last discussion, it had never been replaced in the park.
Well, don't forget, the funds are also a problem, George, we don't have a lot of funds for that park.
Well, then we better build it into the town budget, because that's.
That's what we, that's what we discussed last time, but building it to the budget would be next, for next year, building it to the budget.
So how much is budgeted this year?
Nothing's budgeted, it would be what's in the, um.
There's a trust.
Trust.
How much is there?
Yeah, not much, it was like eight thousand dollars.
And she's done eight thousand dollars worth of work in the park this summer?
No, we, we were looking at.
How much bills have been paid?
I don't know that.
So I, if, if I was manager, she wouldn't get a cent.
Yeah, no, we, I don't believe we paid her anything yet, because the work hasn't been done.
Well, if none of the works been done, yeah.
So we can check in with her and see what her timetable is.
Is, is there a job description of what's involved?
There's a, a scope of interest that was, scope of interest that was, um, filed. All right.
Pay for anything else that you got.
It was a while ago, yeah.
But what's posted?
Um, the RFP would have gone out, yeah, on the website a while ago for it.
And when was this person hired?
I don't know, at the top, I had joined.
Yeah, it was last summer, we did, we did an RFP for gardening and landscaping services, um, I think we got.
She does Watson Park, too.
Yeah, so nobody has supervised her at all.
Yes, we, no, that's a leap, she's been supervised, absolutely, I know she's working hard on the Watson Park.
Responsible for supervision.
I would say, um, all four of us here are responsible for supervision, yeah.
Did you steer it all working?
Yeah, George, what's your next point?
I guess my point is that there is a lack of main, uh, monitoring and supervision of money that should be spent on projects that either isn't spent or isn't spent wisely.
I think that's a leap from just one thing, we have one issue.
I'm talking about the.
Yeah.
The deterioration of the park, I don't know, this year. Um, I don't know what the plans are for the fall, do you have plans for fall maintenance, are the leaves gotta be cleaned up? The tree should have been pruned five, ten years ago, it still hasn't been done. An arborist should be in, looking at that tree, making decisions, what should be cut, this wall, when if the leaves are off of it.
So again, that's all gonna be built into the budget now, because of that trust which has been supporting it in the past is no longer enough to support it. So this is something new for us.
Okay, well then, you know, somebody needs to have the authority to move ahead with these plans to come up for the budget, we can be put in next year, and plans need to be got, uh, taken on to bring in an arborist, so you know what it's gonna cost you to have that tree taken care of properly.
Mm-hmm.
You need to look at what's gonna take for mason work on the, on the walls in there that need to be shorn up. I mean, there's a lot of things that need to be done, but nobody seems to have, you know, it's always left, right, move, that's as a responsibility, it's not clear. Would you, would you like to volunteer to do that? I'll, I'll work, I'll take on the responsibility, just like your other contractors are, to get you a report, and I'll charge by the hour of work.
Well, we're looking for volunteers.
No, I don't think you need to volunteer, because I think this is something you could pay for everything else in town. You, you know, to have things done, you need a professional approach to this, you don't need somebody saying, well, I'll get to it one of these days. Um, that's, that's been in the process with a lot of things around town, I'll get to one of these days, but it does get taken care of, and nobody seems to have the responsibility, it's, it's no responsibility.
Now, it's like, like everything else, we're, we're, we're all volunteers in a sense. I'm, I've been volunteering at the cemetery for twenty-five years, and, you know, there's.
That's all well.
You know, it's all well and good, but the fact is, is that we can't pay someone to do it, we gotta hire somebody. Right now, I have to hire a maintenance crew for the cemetery. That wouldn't be the same here, but I'm still supervised, and I don't get any stipend for that.
The, the only question is, does this become part of the town manager's job? Do we have a town manager, or do we have a town administrator? We have a town administrator, that's one job description, a town manager is another job description. So if you have a town manager, and the town manager is responsible for expenditures and projects, and the implementation of the work in town, then the man, town manager is held responsible for that, and, and, and his accountability or her accountability.
Joanne, did you have a question?
I do, not a question, I just wanna tell George that I'm here all the time. And I, I kind of resent you implying that they do nothing, because.
I'm not saying, I'm saying that two things fall between this spot.
Minor things.
Well, I.
Get into what they're, get into what they're working on, the things they're working on that I see every day that are extremely important, extreme improvement in all departments in the past four years. That's all I'm saying, give them some, give them some credit here.
I've given them credit.
As a resident, I'm speaking to you as a resident, I gotta work, give them some credit for what they do.
Embarrassed by the park, and, yeah, we can't maintain a park.
How about the roads, we have great roads, do you like the, the roads, we have great roads, we've done a good job on roads, we've done a good job on a lot of things, so. So that's. I'm sorry?
I was talking actually, and I shepherd was still running the rolling through.
So I'm gonna pause us, George, do you have anything else besides the park to talk about?
I would like to have a plan of what's gonna take.
No, besides the park. Do you have anything else besides, no, I'm not giving you a plan tonight, we're not, I'm not just presenting you with a plan tonight. Do you have anything else to talk about besides the park?
George, actually, you know, I, I think I have a little bit, something to give you here. So, so we're, I'm actually, was scheduled for this week, now it's gonna be next week. I was gonna walk through Watson Park with Linda Barnard and Katie from the Historical Commission, because we're gonna look at what's called a park grants, um, so this is, you know, there's, I think it's about a hundred thousand dollars for small communities to make improvements to your parks. I'm not sure if that grant can support two parks or if it has to be one. Um, but I'd be happy to look into it, if there's something we can build into that grant for improvements there, obviously it can't be routine maintenance, we do have to figure out that part, but if there's some kind of needed small capital investments in that park, we could talk about maybe including that in that grant. I'd be happy to walk the park with you or take a look at photos and say, okay, let's try and include X, Y, and Z in that.
I. I think what bothers me is, there's certain things that are obvious that on a day-to-day basis, it's like putting toilet paper in the bathroom. You gotta do it sooner or later, and you might as well do it and keep up with it, so you don't find people going in there and not using it. So, why can't we build in a job description in town, the responsibility for bicentennial park? And so that it's swept, it's maintained, it's contracted out on where it needs to be done, like the wall or the tree or whatever.
You guys got time for that?
What's that?
You guys got time for that, bicentennial?
We don't. So then you have to find some other resources.
All right, thank you for your, your time, um, Mr. Henryshan.
If possible, to put a little table in there, so people could have lunch there, we're talking about the little park.
Yeah, there's, there's, there's only one bench in there now, and it's. In front of it.
I'd give you one minute to get.
So.
Land store, and one, you know, sign.
There used to be a.
Yeah, we used to drag it over every year, um, on the, we used to have dougie drag it over.
That's all.
So we are in the audience participation part of the meeting, so you came in at the right time, did you have?
Both on my dinner, my.
Okay, so what would you like to, um, what are your public comments?
I was, well, I got a card in the mail about they're gonna be installing new poles on Beach Hill.
Oh, so our poll hearing is not until at the end of this meeting, we're gonna have a poll hearing? Okay.
I just wondered how long the power was gonna be off for.
Okay, we, um.
We've got someone from ever Source on the line, so once we wrap up this meeting, we'll immediately move to that hearing.
Okay.
Yeah, I heard you talking about the roads. And, uh, Julie Assol Road. I, I can, Tom, just break that road, right, I mean, right after month season, I don't think they got a rated bitch here, so. You're using the road box?
Yeah.
And we're just washing, washing out again.
Yeah.
Is there any, anybody, uh, you know, I, I saw, read somewhere that they were thinking about having harder and somebody to teach them how to do culverts, or, or, or wire runoff, or something, what, what did I read?
Uh, there was a grader school, I sent a gentleman to.
Oh, yeah.
You know who that road is, is that it's so steep, there's no places for runoffs on the way down that hill, so you got a, a variety of work put on there to make more runoffs.
Yeah, yes, that's what it means, yeah.
Problem earlier this year was because we didn't do it, is because of springwater water was usually that old quite a bit, but I didn't want to do any, I didn't want to do any work on it until they were done. And if you look up there, there's probably two holes in the dirt up there already, set off the side. That street fill water, kind of donated to us.
Well, I went to the bus company, day before yesterday, but find out, when the bus was on, nobody notified us, or they said it was on the schedule, when I opened up the schedule, it said they were on the winter season, we'd been driving out. I was seven hours down, on, down and out, I was the first one there. I could, don't blame them, you know, I was the first one there, and I was seven. Well, you're getting, what are you getting a year in taxes by the place, twenty-five thousand, maybe? And, uh, you, they could take care of, care of the road a little bit better, the stone that you put on it is rough on the cars, and that's just three-quarters stone, you decided to put on the top of the road, you never had that before.
Well, there was during the. Coming off of Beach Hill, down that way.
Oh, on Julie Assol Road.
Yes.
You put rocks on the road.
Yes, that's due because of the mud season was coming up through. And we don't, and we don't have a roller, so that's another issue also.
Oh, you need a roller?
Yes, a roller, I borrow a roller once a year, or I wreck one, but I only use it for a month. That's forty-five hundred dollars, and that cuts my budget a lot.
I am, and I don't blame the, the stuff that need, doesn't matter, fathers, I mean, there's money. Six kids now taking the bus, and, uh, the bus, how many, if you fire, I don't know.
Four or six.
Uh, about how they hate the road, you know, wanna put on the road. I can see in the winter time, it's like one lane, I, I know the car. Flying over the top of the hill, we don't hit head on, in the winter, we most, we ran into the snowbank, because it was a one-lane, one-carred thing, you know. Oh, that's all, I'm just bringing it up, bringing it up, and, uh. And then mostly came for the meetings because of the telephone.
So, um.
Somebody's burying their lines or something, too.
So, Mr. Henryshan, if you ever have questions for Dave, he is.
At the garage?
Um, you can reach him on his cell phone, um, he is very responsive, so.
I'm not a complainer, have you ever seen me, I have a Sony, you got the plan? I'm gonna enjoy it now, because there are things on my issue.
Okay, no problem, but you can always reach out to him, too.
Off the road, I break him over, and, well, I know I got my guys working over on Hit Road, alright, and that's a major you made your bomb over there, that's, that's worse than that one.
Oh, it is, is a school bus going on there, too? No, no.
Dave, do you wanna, um. Do you wanna come up for your, uh, department report?
I mean, forty for a year. Anyone that went bike and prom or law, I was the first one to get plowed out, he still wrote the first rule about, wow, this is such a skill.
Well, making sure of the results.
Sure, thank you.
I know you're working hard, and you had all the help, and you have young kids, you know, so.
You got that right.
It's not that, not that easy, but it's easier, but, uh, you probably understand.
All right, Dave, what do you got for us?
All right, um, I thought of D E P about the covert over on Gibbs Road.
Okay.
Um, every, all the paperwork has been signed by all the parties.
Okay.
Uh, right now, he's waiting for the lawyer or the finance person, whoever it is who does the money swap to our account. Um, that's the only thing we're waiting for, on that part. I'm gonna, I'm gonna get, get in contact with thirty-four contractors that are over around here, um, to go over, uh, what has to be done for the forwards, and I will be there along with whoever shows up for the, for the contractors, and D E P is gonna be sitting there and explaining to them what has to be done and how it has to be done.
Okay.
On that. Um, salt, sandbars are in. Woo-hoo.
All the money we get to spend.
Uh, actually, not too bad.
Not too bad, okay.
Uh, if you live over, uh, do you know where Oak Bluffs Town is?
Oak Bluffs Town, no.
Um, right on the, yeah, right on the island, yeah, two hundred and five dollars a ton.
Oh, my God.
We gotta ship it out.
Yeah.
Wow.
On the boat, but anyway, a river salt seventy-two sixty, and tree of salt is ninety-three sixty.
Okay.
Uh, Santa is six, eighteen seventy-five, that's. Both towns do that.
Okay.
Um, we also have Salus, we got one personally.
Oh, okay.
He's going to D O T.
Oh, well, for him, but I'm sorry.
Andrew, okay.
Yeah.
Such a good boy.
Yes. If I could find a couple more like that, we'd be all set.
Oh, so we're gonna be posting then?
Yes, on Christopher, I'll get together. Wednesday?
Wednesday, Wednesday, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, if the weather is good.
Mm-hmm.
Um, the project's gonna start this Friday. The rubber chip on Beach Hill, and the, and the size, okay, if the weather is good.
Mm-hmm.
It can't, it, those can't be wet.
Okay.
On that bus.
Okay.
And that's all I got.
Dave, last question, I noticed the grader's out on Blair Road, are you gonna do the ditches before you move the grader?
You know, George.
They need to be done on both sides.
You need to stop doing, stopping, in the thing. All your, all your, all your leaves, and we're going, and we're going, hopefully this year, we're gonna replace that color pipe by your driveway. Upper driveway.
Doesn't need to be.
Oh, yeah, it does. Yes, it does.
Well, I'm, I'm more concerned with the, the dishes on each side.
The dishes are fine, George, the water's flowing down fine, you know, we gotta put out there, and with the ball, we're all out.
Well, we need to double off.
What's that?
We, we should take a walk, then, for the walk, for that.
Well, I, I've been up and down, too. Uh, our, our major problem was the road, the hill. Yeah, was our biggest issue.
Mm-hmm.
Um, we did mostly, that's pretty much done, we came down and put checked hands on both sides and drove it all the way down, we filled it out, both sides, to the large angle, and hopefully, when we get some rain, um, it will slow it all down, we'll check them down through there.
It was, two lower ones are filling that.
What's that, the checked hands at the bottom are filling that? Well, George, I tell you, if you can tell me, I figured out a way how to stop and all that going, and all that stuff to come down the road, I'm here for you. Um, you're never gonna stop fines coming down on a dirt road in a ditch. Unless you wanna pave the whole road and pave the swales. That's, that's the problem I have so far.
Should be crowding more, so it takes the water off faster, that's.
George, it, it's important, if it's a crown, we had all roads were crowned, until, oh, we had all this rain. Um, it takes time to get back every road and fix it again, over and over and over again, that's taking time away from all the road, other products that we own down. You'd be able to walk me down the road for now, that's good. Um, you know, we got fifteen miles of road, and they're all, try, try harder, Blair. I've been up and down that road, and we found it all, yeah, it needs a lot of work. But, time, time is the biggest thing. We have small projects to do, and then all of a sudden, the rain comes, we break back out there, we're doing it again. If I can find a way to stop all that, that'd be great. Um, all it takes is, like, the issue down here, the water of the road down here, another one's over around Calvin Road, about, um, catch station, that's like four feet too low. Um, we, you could have a plan all year round, you have, but everything is gonna change, no matter what.
Did that get fixed, the water leak, I saw them out there?
It's fixed.
Yeah.
Now we're discussing on the other half of the problem.
Which is just the groundwater, right?
Oh, it's it's not, at that time, I being that, when my workers not there tested the water.
Mm-hmm.
We tested it, we're from the source, and it was chlorine. And chlorine on top.
Okay.
Steve came out and checked it. And I was with him, and he checked it, there's a little side on the right outside of the road, they dug a little hole, and the water fills into it, he checked it, there's no chlorine, and I says, no, the water's filtered, it's dirt grabbing, all that stuff, so it pretty much went to gone.
Mm-hmm.
So he goes, well, how are we gonna get the water off the road and, and, and put it in the aisles, it's, it's, I guess, paper towels. Put it down, squeeze it into the thing, and came out, that came out at, uh, three point one.
Okay.
Uh, the one above, that was, we knew it was a line, that was four point one.
Okay.
Um, Mark Musman was here Saturday, replaced it, the line, uh, the brake. Um, so right now, we're waiting till the weather stops.
Yeah.
To find out if it is groundwater.
Okay.
So it may be a couple of more weeks, and I hate to say this, but I, I, I have a plan, and it's just from the. You know, I'm, I'm gonna have, wanna have to do it in emergency repair on the road.
Mm-hmm.
We're gonna dig by almost seven hundred feet right down to one lane, and do the same thing we did over on the other end of Russell State, just put it up, it's a French drain in.
Okay.
And have it run out to just, just below Maple Lane. And just have it all run out to that lane, and they will pay for, although, not runway, two years.
Yeah, yeah.
All it will, all it depends on when, uh, we find out about the water coming up to, what it is.
Okay.
Now, is any of that water, remember, we, we took a little walk over here?
Yeah.
Yeah, no. That hill, you have, you have water coming down that hill all the time, that's why we got that drain ditch there.
Mm-hmm.
Now, all that crap that's growing into the train, drain ditch, no. If that was mold, would that allow the water to flow a little quicker and drain it?
I, I think it's more a problem down farther, I mean, the hill itself down there.
Yeah, but this stuff here, right now, that's not allowing the water to flow.
No, it's not, I mean, it wouldn't hurt, it wouldn't hurt having it, yeah, it's here.
Yeah, uh, that, that machine that, uh, is part of the classroom, I have a garage, do you have access to that?
Well, is that the state?
That's, that's. Oh, you're looking at probably about two hundred thousand dollars.
Oh, no, no, I mean, you know, can you hot water go down? I know, it's not gonna happen, but.
When did I know that was coming?
They love. They like it, you know, I, I would like to borrow for, you know, a day or two, or a month, but, yeah.
Yeah, because that, that, I think that, that is one of our big problems, especially in a rainy year like we've had so far, is that retaining the water and it's seeping out in between houses and that.
And I know it's all the houses do have drains in the, that has a French drain, the house number five, the French drain goes all around the, the whole fat sides and back of the house. Um, but it's, it's down farther from there for the, um, the seepage.
Yeah.
I know, on, on Maple Lane, there's a lot of water coming here and there and everywhere. And it's pretty much from the backside of the houses there, you know.
Now, another problem that was brought to my attention was the fact that the leaching field for this building.
Okay.
Okay, is way up there in the back up on the side of the hill.
Yeah.
And, uh, with all, uh, um, for lack of better term, raspberries and everything that's growing there, that's, that's gonna create a problem with the leaching field.
No, that really, I see a lot of people put a whole bunch of stuff on them, around them, and make mounds and all that.
Yeah, but I mean.
The leach, the leach.
It's like, I mean, you can't walk through there at all, you know.
You know, I mean, you could have it, haven't, haven't inspected, but if you put trees on it like that, I mean.
No, it, it, it should be grass, that's what it should be.
Oh, yeah, but, um, everything else has grass on them and weeds or whatever on them, but the leach is built, it's, it's in the bottom of it, it has nothing to do with the top part.
Yeah, but it's, this top part to retain water on the top.
Is, is that a Title V bunker, or is it a conventional leach field?
Good question.
I don't know.
That's a good question, yeah.
All right, is that all you have for us?
That is it.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, thank for letting us throw you.
All right.
Thanks for letting us throw you.
Um, so we're out of that section, we're moving along.
This is important. The, the bridge on Beach Hill Road.
Isn't it a wonderful bridge?
Yeah, you tar, put all kinds of tar, I didn't put tar in the holes and the tar on the bridge, but I think that's in my car.
I, I know my truck, too, you know, but I suppose right now, I need to put the tar in. Why? Because we started on top of the hill, did all that, and came down around and moved on to another project.
And, and the big, and the dump trucks that were gone, what's the way to run on that bridge, forty ton? That's more than eighteen, really?
No, it's forty ton.
The sign's got a short, like, like a box truck.
Yeah, it's forty.
Now, you gotta, you gotta remember, though, bridges go by axle rate.
Yeah.
So it, it can be rated for forty ton, but that's, well, that's over the length of the truck.
Right, and that's so forty ton for a big, long truck.
It's not for a big truck. Twenty-four ton, or twenty-five ton for a dumb truck.
I would say, look bigger, and don't come to, honestly, that truck would.
But they did it all that, you know, you get the grip, and you get the front axle from across, but kind of rear axle, it's, it's right, it's already off the road.
Dave, will you make sure he has your contact information for me?
He does.
Okay.
I just wanted to make sure that all the.
Lucky, I like you.
You're fixing the brake, we're, we're going to do some kind of one and a half and drive. Because of the mon, roads close, you know, where we have to go with it. I'm like, I wanna make a wider.
So we're gonna move on to the town administrator report.
Sure, uh, so starting off.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Cause this is the theme of the night, just a little more pain. Fire Service Group, um, so I think a, maybe a year and a half ago.
Yeah.
Uh, Chief Mother took it upon himself to get a different company to do some of our inspections around sprinklers, fire pump, et cetera. We've been paying out the nose ever since.
Oh, really?
Um, however, I, I don't, I don't blame him and I don't blame Fire Service Group. I, I think what happened here is basically we previously had this contract. It's Furcog, um, told a, a firm that. Wanted a collective bid with Furcog, um, and I think they kind of just did bare minimum. Really didn't look at a whole lot.
Okay.
Now we have Fire Service Group in there and they're actually saying, well, there's actually a fair number of issues.
Okay.
Um, I'm gonna have a call with Fire Service Group, uh, tomorrow and just discuss the invoices and kind of separate out. Here's the stuff we can expect annually and here's the stuff that. You know, we could avoid if we put a little bit more money into actually, you know, shoring up the fire pump, et cetera. Um, so more updates on that. Um, I'm also gonna talk to the finance committee about, you know, some kind of reserve fund transfer or something because. It's a lot of money, right? At the beginning of the year for town hall maintenance.
Really?
Yeah, because so they had, they had an emergency call, so Hoppy had to come in. Um, because there was some alarm going off that right there is like a thousand dollars to have them come in on a Saturday. So there's just been a number of those kind of things where, yeah.
Okay.
Trying to get a handle on it, but I just wanna flag it as something to be aware of.
Okay.
Um, capital planning, um. So actually this kind of feeds into the next part of the, uh, report here. So community compact test practices I mentioned, um, these are available again. Um, the two that I've been looking at, one is the local hazard mitigation plan that we're, I think we're hoping will set us up for success with the, the backup power project. Um, and then there's also an asset management one, um, and I've been talking, Dave and I have been discussing this. Um, I think, you know, one of the, the real needs, it's kind of funny to think of it as an asset. Um, but the, the trees in our public right, um, we've talked about how, you know, we don't really have a great sense of. Uh, what the needs are in terms of trimming canopy, um, what the tree warden's budget should be for removing trees.
Yeah.
It's sort of at this point, we hand over a sum of money. We think it's about right and then we're not, there, there's no real metrics to success.
Yeah, absolutely.
So I'm, I'm gonna be meeting with, um, at least one vendor this week who does. Risk assessments for public trees. So you could, basically the idea is they do a windshield survey. Drive down your road, look at what trees are threatening your road, which ones are threatening power lines, kind of give you some data on all that.
Okay.
So you can actually plan budgets, so.
Great.
Hoping we can fund that effort with, uh, this grant program, the, the divisional local services about it. Uh, and then real quick update, the resilient dirt roads projects, um, so we're now, we're now in the beaver phase of things. Uh, so we're working with Pioneer Valley Planning to identify, um, you know, Davis mentioned all the, the. Fourth and Door Dirt Roads that are impacted by beaver activity. Uh, Fussin O'Neil is gonna be coming out at some point to actually take a look at those sites. Um, and we've been working on just getting a list of landowners who will need access from, and of course, big one is Springfield, and I'm sure. We'll work with Nicole over there and, and be able to get access. Um. Ongoing projects, uh, so I, I sent a copy of this over. Dave and I have been working on the snow and ice management plan. Um, so this was really prompted by that giant snowstorm in March. Um, so we'll, take a look at it, uh, we're gonna kind of try to refine it. I'm sure Jeff will wanna look at it too.
Okay.
Um, but generally, you know, the idea is you, here are your priorities for which roads need to be cleared immediately, what facilities, particularly emergency facilities need to be cleared immediately. And then it's also just kind of like an FAQ for people who have questions about your highway department's operations, um, what happens if. A plow hits a mailbox, you know, that kind of thing.
That's great.
So take a look at it, um, if we can add stuff, subtract stuff.
Okay.
And kind of refine it before this winter.
Okay.
Uh, so then on to personnel. Uh, so Lynn Kane, uh, submitted her resignation as treasurer collector. It's effective September twenty eighth.
Okay.
Um. You know, I, the, the thinking here, a- at least for me, has been let's, let's put out an RFP for treasurer collector services. We'll likely end up with Sarah again. Um, that might just be for this year, um, we'll have to look at our options. Um, you know, as we've discussed, there is kind of this pipeline also for municipal finance, um. Students to become, you know, part of your actual town. Um, so I'm looking into that as well, working with DLS on that. Um, but basically we're, we'll hope to have Sarah back in place, you know, by October, um, to fill that in. Uh, and then this came up, so the animal control position that, um. Chief Dubiel is filling on an interim basis. Um, I, I assume we're giving her the stipend for that, yeah, so I just wanted to, to clarify.
Yeah.
Um. And then a couple, couple minor miscellaneous things.
Just, you know, how, do we just start? Next, all right, or where, where do I start?
Probably start the day that she was up.
Well, that would be July first.
Okay.
That, that Terry left.
Oh, that Terry left. So I would, I guess we'd, let's look at the when she was.
This is the other question, cause some of these stipends are quarterly and some of them get paid out more frequently.
Two weeks.
That one had been every two weeks. I am kind of wondering, given that. Um, Chief Dubiel has a biweekly paycheck already, if she would be open to a quarterly and then we don't have to. Kind of sift back through the weeks there. And we can still, I don't know, just, just a thought.
The first one will be the beginning of October, that would make it very simple, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, it should probably.
Yeah, we can, we can talk to the chief about it.
Okay.
Um, so real quick, I just wanted an opportunity to debrief on the Blanford Fair. Uh, it sounds like it was, uh, it was great this year. Um.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, didn't get Matt here or.
Yeah.
Other folks, but maybe we can push that off a week or two and.
Kind of balance the books. I talked to Matt this morning and he said, well, he says. We're still trying to figure out if we made money or if we lost money, so.
Okay, maybe we'll, so we'll try to get him in here at some point. I'd like to just have a general discussion about, you know, what, what else the town could do for whether opportunities there are for.
I did see our police there and that was really nice, cause that's something you don't typically see. It was nice to see them walking around and having conversations with people and that's been sort of a. An issue. It's, it's not sort of, it's been an issue.
Are, are the police in tonight? Cemetery on, uh, Blair Road. Where. An aggravated driver drove into the cemetery and tried to leave by another exit. That wasn't an exit.
Which is?
And, uh. I went down to the state police cars today, cause they supposedly arrested. Our participant in the incident and, uh, they have no records that he was arrested and. Therefore, they recommended me to get in touch with our police department.
Okay, so yeah, we, we can reach out to the chief and, yeah, find out what happened there.
Yeah, cause, you know, I, I'd just like a copy of the report for my records. Thank God, you know, he didn't. Hit any tombstones or anything like that. But, uh. You know, I just want, so we know what's going on. He took out a couple of, uh, rhododendrons that we had planted there, but. Those are cheap, so.
Yeah, well, let me know if we need to file an insurance claim also. Yeah.
Um, and then the scavenger hunt?
Yeah, yeah, real quick, um, so this was something, well, Mary brought this up. Basically every five years, each town is really supposed to go and. It's up to the select board, go and find the markers at your town corners.
Okay.
Um, but there's an out, you can select, you can select two people in your place to carry out this task. You know, I, we were just chatting about this, it hasn't been done in years, um, and we just thought it might be a fun thing to put out there for town residents. If any two residents wanna participate in this and then we've got a nice little template from another town that they can fill out. Once they find all the different stones.
How many are there?
So I think, we figured out there are like nine or something, right? Because it's wherever you have a corner with another town, so we meet in Huntington.
Yeah.
So, so anyway, I'll, I'll put it out in a newsletter.
They're looking and then just marking the GPS coordinates or?
Something like that, yeah, yeah, so.
Well, I know, uh, quite a few years ago, we went looking for the monoliths that about Otis.
Uh huh.
And, uh, I think there's four. I know where there's three, I could never find the fourth one. And, uh. It's somewhere out by where that, uh, Marine is, that's across from the camp, it's right there. It's somewhere out there.
Are you talking about one of those long?
Uh, no, that, that I know about, but it's the one past Miller's farm. Yeah.
Well, at least a couple of these corners are in reservoirs, so. Extra points if they dive and find. Anyway, just a fun thing, we'll, I'll work with Mary on, on doing something there.
Can, can I ask you, um. On Chester Road, we have. Cross from Martins there, what, what do we have? Six dead trees?
Yep.
Now. This, uh. Forestry thing, is there? Is there a way that they can go and inspect this and, and because that. We already have one come down last year.
Yeah.
And took out the wires and caused considerable problems. And there's a, you know, they gotta be taken out, someone's gonna get.
Are they threatening wires or the road?
The road. They're, they're not on the wire side of the road.
I'm happy to, to mention it to Mark.
Yeah.
Since he's the tree ward.
Uh, about a year ago and, uh, Jeff's tree was supposed to take him down his last year or so.
All right, let me, let me get back in touch with him. Um. Yeah, let me, let me chat with Mark, but yes, I mean, this, this risk assessment that this person would do would definitely capture something like that.
Okay.
Um, and, you know, the, it might think it would be, it would be kind of the major town roads that we'd be looking at, so Chester Road, Russell Stage. Beach Hill, you know, uh, North Blanford, so. Yeah, yeah, let me, let me get back in touch with Mark about that.
Great, so under action items, we have, uh, make a motion to, uh. Accept FY twenty twenty-four warrant number four and FY twenty twenty-four warrant number five.
And what are they?
These are the ones that we're signing right here.
On what? Number four you had. Last week, last week, but you weren't, didn't have a meeting, so. Paperwork is right there.
Oh, all right.
Except for payroll. I haven't received payroll yet, so I'll have to have you sign it another time.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, ugh, FRTA. Um, so motion to appoint, uh.
Nope.
No, I have to abstain. I can't.
Give me a minute, where are you?
I can appoint, we can appoint Christopher.
This is my, this is the appointment I put on there, so Ferta needs to be on their advisory board.
So. Can I vote myself? It doesn't matter, cause I think I have to, it's like I, I don't really wanna do it anyways, um. Let's do a point, uh, myself and Christopher Dunn, town administrator, as the, um, FRTA advisory board. Members for Blanford. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? I don't wanna, all in favor? All right, um. Motion to appoint, um. Can I do all these all in one? No. Christopher Dunn, um, to the Commission on Disability, um. Commission? Department, no. Commission on Disability, um, from July first, twenty twenty-three to June thirty of twenty-four. So is that a discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to appoint Margaret McCusky.
Those, um, you already did all those, that, this is, um, we did all these signing.
Oh, we just need to sign it, okay.
Signing only on E.
Check.
F, G, H. I. And J, the reason this is happening is cause. Normally I get the appointment and I give you the paperwork and you make the motion, but they were all. Talked about last, last meeting.
Okay.
The motions are already done, so just signatures.
Can I put in my claim for working comp for writer's grant?
You can drive.
When you worry about workers comp, even if you break your back, it's tough to get money out of them, so be lucky with that.
So that's it for us, we'll adjourn and go to the poll meeting, is that right? Okay.
There is.
I was questioning.
If, if anybody says anything about the tree that's been taken down into the library and it needed to be done.
That's what I said.
Ever Source said it was, um, cutting the wires.
Yeah.
Which one ran right under the tree and there were dead branches that were also potentially. When bird heavy snowstorm lacking mark could land on the roof of the library.
But now you could get it to a person that could make pencils or pens or bowls and then sell those as. Poor my, my library, maple.
Pencils.
Mr. Andrew Quinn out on Town Road. Does Blanford Wood Products and makes tools and.
If he wants it, it would be nice to, to have some of it turned into stuff that people could purchase, just a thought. I know I drove by this morning, I was like, my mom's gonna text me, oh no, this is very uncertain, sure enough, I got that and I was like, oh, I know, I know, it's sad.
Your mom leaves for Poland tomorrow?
Yeah, yeah, today.
Today?
This is a poll hearing supposed to be part of you.
Alright, so we were, we're adjourning first, right? And then, okay, so we are, meeting is adjourned.
No, we gotta vote.
No, I don't think so. No.
Why?
I was saying that. Oh, I didn't sign it. Anytime I want, whenever you start going off on a tangent.
Damn.
Alright, so, um, we are now opening and recorded for a poll hearing for, what is the address? I shouldn't. I have the address written somewhere.
Yes, forty-three Beach Hill Road.
Forty-three Beach Hill Road. Very, and we have.
Our town clerk.
Near town clerk, and we have a representative from EverSource here.
Yes, Nicole Scarborough from, uh, EverSource is on the line.
Hi Nicole, thank you for joining us.
Hi, thank you for having me.
I hope you were thoroughly entertained with our meeting so far.
Um, it's a lot better to listen to than Pittsfield's, I'll tell you that much.
Good to hear, we'll take it. Um, do you wanna, um, just give us a brief overview about the, the poll and mention?
So I have a, um. I have a customer requesting to have a house built at forty-three Beach Hill Road. Um, they need a midspan pole on the road, um. To get power to their house.
Okay. Do we have any questions?
Is this a new house?
Yes, she just said building a new house.
No.
So no, no questions?
Is that the lot with the camper on it?
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
Now, is, is that the line that comes in through Grandville?
Yeah, we had our park, Grandville.
Yeah, okay.
It was. It, how long are we on this? I know something about a buried line. Is that true?
I don't know.
Yeah, I'm still here, um. He's going to put a crossover, so it's gonna go across the street. Overhead, and then he's burying his power lines. To his house.
So that's all, yeah, it's not.
Yeah, it's all private. Underground.
Well, how long you think the power is gonna, how could we plan for our power, our, our, it's gonna be gone out for. Two days, eight hours, four hours?
To put the pole line in? Uh. They should be able to do everything hot. I don't think you'll have a power issue.
Okay, that's great.
All right, um, do we have the wording that I need for the? For the motion?
Uh, so there is an order, hold on, I can pull it up. We share this and then you should be able to see it.
Okay.
Okay.
So it's after the, it is hereby ordered, I believe.
So I just read that. Right? Is that all I have to, do we don't?
The whole thing.
Do we motion on it? Or we just read it?
Motion on it.
We motion on it. Okay, uh. So it is hereby ordered that, that, and start, thank you, electric company DBA EverSource. Be, and it is hereby granted a location for permission to construct and maintain a line of poles, wires and. Cables together with such sustaining and protecting fixtures as said company may deem necessary in the public way hereafter. Here and after referred to as requested in petition of said company dated the sixth day of March twenty twenty-three. Um. I really, I don't have to read this whole thing, do I?
No.
No. So, um, so motion to approve, keep scrolling down, I think that's where I need to.
You have a question?
Uh, we can do it in discussion, hold on, let me just find, Mary, do you know, is it motion to improve the installation of one solely owned midspan pole? Located one thousand seven hundred eighty feet southwest of, west of the intersection with Hall Road, Beach Hill Road, Blanford.
Who pays for the poll?
Not us. Is there a second for discussion? Is there a second for discussion?
Second.
Okay, do you have a question, Mary?
Um yeah, and are we absolutely certain that there aren't going to be any telephone wires or West Joe Gas and Electric Internet cord drop wires in?
I don't know.
That would be in the future.
Maybe.
That adds extra cost.
But not for us.
No.
No, that's.
Yeah.
Yeah, because that they, I don't know where the last drop is for the uh fiber optics. Is that, yeah, here, like?
I think we had the last.
Yeah, so they, yeah, that would, that would also include if they show tubes.
Alright, okay.
Yeah.
We'll, we'll live in Peter, sorry, either way, yeah.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Do you need anything else from us, Nicole?
Um the only, I heard a rumor you guys might be doing something with the town hall electric.
Yeah, hi, yeah, Nicole, so we had been, um I think Peter Wozniak, who had been providing some electrical engineering work for us, had reached out um and was trying to get a contact at EverSource. Um so I I think I connected him, uh Amy Henderson over there.
Yeah.
Put someone in touch with him, so we should be all set on that front. Um and then simultaneously, uh I believe Elmo Electric was looking to do some work on the transformer in our basement, which is facing a lot of water, um so you may be referring to that as well, I'm not sure. Um.
I've gotten a lot of requests for Blanford lately, for the town. Um I have not seen anything for the the town hall specifically, um right now I have I've talked to somebody from the town for the water and or the water plant, I should say. And the only thing at the I've dealt with Elm with is the Blanford Fairgrounds.
Okay. Um well, on the the water treatment plan, I think that would be our our, I'll check in with our water superintendent to find out where that's at. Um but um yeah, I'll have to, I'll just check in with them.
All right, and um if you, you guys have my um and you may have my contact number, if not, you can always reach out to Amy Henderson.
Yep.
I know she has my contact number. Um if you guys need anything from me in the future.
Thank you very much, we appreciate it.
Not a problem, thank you and have a good night.
You too. Alright. Oh, it saves your birthday? Oh, good God, tell me we don't, we're almost birthday twins. Oh, sweet Jesus. I had no idea.